Good evening, everyone. It being 6:00 PM on Monday, December 2nd. I call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. We have, we're following the modified open meeting law guidelines from the Governor. And we have Attorney Trez online and Sylvia Abraham online. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on YouTube. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the regular session meeting minutes from November 18th. It should be in your packet. I did have one correction, I think, in the first section on the public hearing for the junk dealer license. Scott, I just spoke with him, had, it says, Scott, that the new owner, the potential owner, new owner.
Potential owner.
Does anybody have any questions? Nope.
Got me, thank you.
No, I will make a motion to approve the regular session meetings on November 18th with that one, one notation.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we, in conformity with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 56, for the purpose of holding a tax classification hearing to establish the relative tax burden to be borne by each class of properties for FY '25. We have Mr. Mark Becker. I'll need somebody to open the hearing.
I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Kelly, can you pull the board?
Selectman Davy?
Yes.
Selectman Claymore?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Selectman Deezick?
Yes.
Chairman, you can pull up.
Yes. Mr. Becker?
Greetings, everybody. The tax classification hearing, annual assessment, determine the percentage born within class. I've been reading through the hearing information. Just trying to just jump into it, I don't want to time line to that. Our first page, the only four, basically, just an update from the previous year's. From the previous year's valuations, the town grew its assessment value by 151 million this past year, broken down into the various classes, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property growth. Underneath, we have a small chart, which is basically overall as a median percentage change. As a percentage change, the town's valuation was about 4%. Our single families just under four, condos 3.9. Two and three families still lead the way at a 6.7 average median, and the rest falls in line with our different uses. The next page, and the reason why we always talk about classification and levy. We have a levy limit, which is based upon the previous year's levy limit from fiscal '24. And to that, we add the 2.5% increase, which is Prop 2.5. So in the middle of the page, we have $680,000 being added to last year's levy, along with a very nice new growth of $445,000 for a levy limit of 28.3. On top of that, we add what's referred to as our debt exclusion, which would be our past votes at town meetings for various projects in town. This year versus last year, it's a slight drop of about $45,000 in the debt exclusion figure, which brings us to the maximum allowable levy of $32,317,000. The next page is just an explanation of our debt exclusions. As you can see on the left-hand side, going back all the way to '03, middle school, 11 police and fire, we had a Bay Path amount, Park Ave, middle school renovations, various other projects, all the way through the library, and the newest, which is the Bartlett High School renovation. The calculation is based upon last year's numbers, this year's payments of debt and interest, and then adjusted for some reimbursements that we do not put onto the debt service amount. So in that far right-hand column is the $3,964,000, which is the debt exclusion amount this year on our levy. Our next sheet is what I refer to as the historical value sheet, going back 20 years. This will be the seventh year that the town has potentially gone for the single rate. Going backwards in time from '06 to '18, we had various shifts, putting more of a burden on the businesses and giving a little bit break to the residuals. Decisions was made about 12 or 14 years ago to start bringing that back into a par value, almost trying to make it one-to-one or being more fair to everybody, including our businesses. Last year, our rate was $12.18. This year, the proposed single rate will be dropping 30 cents to $11.88. The undersheet is basically our new growth and our calculations as we bring it forward from, you know, the past of time. So we have on this line on top, the 680,000, which we talked about, the Prop 2.5 from the levy sheet, our new growth, our debt exclusions, and our new levy amount. This year's valuation from the previous year, we've gone up 151 million. Last year, with the major increase in sales over the last two years, the number was even higher at 280 and 319 the previous year. Coming into our next page, valuation as a class. The town of Webster is broken up into basically four different types of classification. Residential as a whole, which is just under 86%. And then we have our commercial, just under 10. We have an industrial base, which is falling off and decreasing basically from year to year. And then we have what's called personal property growth, or personal property. The major input on personal property would be our utility companies, our gas companies, our electric companies. A large portion of the new growth figures that we've experienced in the last three or four years have come from the utility companies' continued work in the communities. Under this, we have what's referred to as the levy. As we worked through the numbers, we saw the number 32,317,000. Because we can't split pennies down in the single rate, the levy that I'm proposing is 32,285, which is, in theory, about 31,000 less than the maximum we could do. In a simple form, I broke down to give an example what the split shift means. So I've broken it down in four cent increments from the $11.88. Now, on the first line, it's the same for all classifications. As we go down four cents, the four cents down on the residential is 24 cents up on commercial. So as you go, it's basically a 1 to 6 or a 1 to 7 ratio. When we go down to a 20-cent decrease at the 11.68, it's actually a $1.19 difference. In past years, our shift had been much higher, but this is just meant to give an example on how the changes can occur. As I always tell a person, a 10 to 20% change on the residential is in the dollars for the commercial taxpayers. So basically, reviewing the numbers and going through them, I've always been encouraged in the direction of the selectmen in the past six years, going with a single rate and having parity or, you know, fairness with our tax rate across the board. I've been asked what kind of communities have split rates. Well, Webster had a split rate years ago. Most communities that have a split rate now are a higher percentage of CIP, commercial, industrial, personal property, in that 25, 22, 30% range. That's when they don't get hit quite as hard, but the numbers are drastically different. The city of Worcester, they look at a rate of about $13,000 for residential, and they maximize that big change and really, I think, penalize the commercial businesses. Up until about four years ago, we used to have the Worcester Chamber of Commerce visiting with us all the time, you know, basically praising the town of Webster and some of the surrounding towns by going with the single rate. If there's any questions on value or, you know, numbers, how they get spent, it's an amazing thing. On that last history sheet, as you look backwards, you know, the dollar difference of levy raised from 10 years ago or five years ago, it goes up almost $1 million on its own with new growth and the Prop 2.5 override. But the biggest changes are when the debt exclusions hit. Going backwards in time, 10 years ago, between '14 and '15, we went from 600,000 in debt exclusion to 2.2 million. That was the first big hit of our school projects that were voted on, you know, the previous years. Right now, we've hit that level. We were at 2.2. In the last cycle, we've jumped up to almost $4 million every year. But that's part down the tax rate because of the value increases. You know, the value increase, you've gone up almost like, almost billion dollars in the last eight years. But when the values come back from that seller point that it was when the markets were just destroyed, you know, the values go up, the tax rates go down, but you're always raising more. You know, someone asked me, what was the magic number this year? And I said 4.5%. If your property went up 4%, 3.8%, your taxes are the same. Some properties have. Certain properties have it. Two and three families, people who've done work on the lake, you know. But it's all done statistically with the sales. We've just gotten digesting the 23 calendar year sales with these values. Next year, I'm looking at a higher increase across the town in value, but we're also looking at our debt exclusion being increased from our next funding of the Bartlett School presentation. So I'm not going to say it's going to be as dramatic as it was 10 years ago, but it's going to have an impact where I'll be explaining a little bit more next year.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask for clarification? I think we're all familiar with tax levy plus 2.5% plus debt exclusions. I don't think everyone knows what new growth is and how that's calculated. Maybe you could explain that.
New growth is properties being split and new lots coming online, a building permit, or what I refer to as a knock-down rebuild. Webster's been blessed, we've had like 14 big builds in town, calendar year '23 for about $15 million. And when you take $1 million and times it by $12,000, that's $12,000. So 12,000 times 12 million is 150,000. So basically, more than half of our money is in the new growth and construction. The other part is that personal property utility growth, which the Department of Revenue will allow the towns and cities to change the depreciation formula and the way they treated replacement costs and the new work that's being put into everyone's systems. When we talk about new growth, we talk about something we did three or four years ago. We had Goya Food. We gave Goya Food a TIF agreement. Goya Food's original TIF agreement was to do $5 million worth of work for about $75,000 worth of what I call grace. Well, by the time they started and did it and got everything ready to go, it's about $8.5 million worth of growth. And their grace was $100,000, I think, $10,000 last year. So in the first two years, it's 100%, and then it goes down 20, 40, 60, 80. So we'll be picking up some of that new growth as we go forward after next year. Just on that, on that one project. But, you know, things, things are happening. You know, wanted to warn possible things being built over off of the industrial park. Things, things going, but new growth, we've, new growth has sustained the major increases of our expenses. Prop 2.5 is 2.5. When new growth was new growth 10, 12 years ago, 175 or 200 was a lot. You take a look at that new growth line now, I'm nervous in saying it's a big number next year. We're going up for our estimates a lot because the estimate has always been low, but conservative in accounting realms is what you have to be and do.
So now, I guess, in, in theory, now maybe in practice, as you upgrade the value of your property, your valuation reflects that. And so the new growth number reflects the fact that if you're the one who upgraded your property, you're the one paying that additional taxes, which adds up to this number. So, so in essence, you know, it's a way to fairly assess additional tax burden attributable to people enhancing and bringing more value to their property.
Certain, certain things aren't taxable. All of your solar projects on people's houses. We're not, we're not grabbing that as a new value. That's a special part of the law. If you need a roof or a window, you need a roof or a window. So we're not getting that as a major growth, but it's a small, smaller percentage in the dollar amount. But it all contributes to the bottom line. Again, Webster's 6,700 properties. You know, it might seem small, but it's, we got the trailers on their own lots, we got the mansions on the lake, we got the houses out in the woods. And they're all worth a lot more now than they were five years ago.
And the one, one thing I will say too, before I step back, is I've heard this notion before that somehow, you know, the tax rate is the beginning of the process. The tax rate is the end of a long budget process where, where the assessors determine how the tax revenue that's being raised is apportioned basically per property.
By, by the value.
Right, so it's based upon what was spent, not the beginning of what's to be spent in future years. And again, I've had that question before. It would seem obvious, but in case people don't understand that. And that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, unless there's questions for me, so.
Some people always think Prop 2.5 means their taxes can't go up individually more than 2.5%. People don't know what Prop 2.5 is, but when it's explained to them, they said, oh, that makes sense. And they're not, you know, it's the old saying, an informed taxpayer is a happy taxpayer.
Is that true?
Very true. At least the last 10 years. This is my 21st recap tax classification hearing, so it's been, been quite the walk, I should say.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Any questions from the board? Any comments? I think we're, at least I'm comfortable with having continuing with a single tax rate. I see no need, you know, based on your explanation of.
If, if we could have a motion for a residential rate of one.
That's what you're looking.
Yeah.
We don't do the motion in the hearing, do we?
No, no, I'm just saying it's, you know, it being a public hearing, just, don't jump the gun.
Yeah.
Well, there may be other people that should speak to it. Mr. Assessor.
Any questions?
Any questions or comments from anyone? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Kelly, can you pull the board, please?
Selectman Davy?
Yes.
Selectman Claymore?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Selectman Deezick?
Yes.
Chairman, you can pull up.
Yes.
So are there any comments or questions further from the board before we vote?
Just a great job of explaining, thank you.
Say again, please.
I said a great job of explaining it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
If anybody ever wants to have more questions, I'm always available, I like to share.
It's nice to have the history, too. I mean, it goes, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
A lot of, a lot of numbers there.
So I think with the explanation given that a single class of one is probably something we should continue with and looking for a motion to that effect.
I'm not sure this is worded correctly. I make a motion that we adopt a, a single tax rate of one.
Yes, again.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next year. Next is another public hearing, a request to approve the application for a Class II used car dealer's license for Ash Owen and Jenkins Towing, located at 135 North Main Street, Webster, Mass. The application is requesting five sale vehicles on the lot.
I make a motion, we open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Kelly, can you pull the board?
Selectman Davy?
Yes.
Selectman Claymore?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Selectman Deezick?
Yes.
Chairman, you can pull up.
Yes. Is there anyone here tonight from, from the towing? If you would. You can both come up.
Sorry, I just translated my camera.
Okay. Have a seat. Just if you could state your name, both of you.
Marion Leon, ¿y tu nombre?
Jackson Ramirez. Welcome.
Thank you.
So we have a discussion, he's looking to, you're looking to increase the number of vehicles? Correct.
Yes.
Because what, what do they have right now through the chair?
No, this is a new application.
So, okay. Right, so what's at the location now?
Is, is, what was there before?
He has a towing company over there.
Okay.
Towing, yeah.
Okay, so that was existing.
It is, it still exists, yeah.
And he's looking to add five?
Yeah, he wants to like add dealers.
Used car?
Right. Used cars, yeah.
Did Ann or anyone see this? Any comment?
No, I think this, Kelly, this was given to you this evening. The, the new drive, yes.
So nobody's actually seen this?
Yeah, he first received this.
So have you, did you submit this? Six.
Yeah, he did.
It doesn't mark which cars are, where you're looking to put the used cars, the five cars? Is it here or here? Well, that's more than five.
Yeah, but he has space for cars here or here or over there.
Oh, okay. But there won't be any more than five.
No, I don't want to see it.
No, okay, okay, thank you. You can have a seat. So I don't know if anybody, he's looking to put five cars in any one of those 10 locations.
On the memorandum, it says the application states that they wish to add, pardon, five more vehicles.
Well, I'm assuming, were any of these parking spaces existing that he uses now for his towing business for employees or whatever?
They're empty. So it's a garage also, so for his business, he puts a garage inside, you know, those are extra spots.
Yeah.
Around it. So they're empty, basically.
So, so through the chair, where, on this diagram are you working, would you like to put the five cars that are for sale?
Sorry. I would assume in the front, yes. This four? Yeah, and where would the fifth car be? You, you're asking for five. So there? There, okay, okay, that makes sense. They're facing the front, yes, yeah, yeah. So what he's explaining, that's one, two, three, four, five, right across.
Parking for customers and.
That's just the towing business, yeah.
Right, but I would assume you have customers.
Are these parking spaces for cars that are being towed?
If you have 10 parking spaces, we're trying to.
Yeah.
Since we haven't seen this till just now.
Oh, okay.
We're trying to figure out what the 10 spaces are, the additional spaces over here, whether they're for towing cars that are being towed in.
The other company. And those were existing parking spaces?
Yes, yes. Yes, they're existing.
Okay. So I see, I see now, as long as you've defined where the five cars are going to be, that's, that's fine.
So through the chair, if I'm understanding what I read earlier from Ann Morton, you know, Ann is recommending that a site review be done before we can offer this, only because I think she's confused about where the cars would be parked.
Yeah.
Also, a little bit uncertain in terms of what kind of construction, if any, would be necessary in order to put the office in the back that you were asking about. And then she has a question about one of the property lines, which.
Right, and you know, the request for a five, five car license does require, require site plan review.
Does it, does not?
It does require site plan review, so this would have to go through, anything you do would obviously be subject to a site plan approval. And of course, that's in the planning board's, you know, realm.
Yeah.
To determine.
I'm just curious why it appeared here tonight?
I'm sorry?
Why it appeared here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the plan at this, this.
Why this whole thing if it needs to go before the plan?
Well, because, well, because the, you know, the applicant isn't going to go through that time and expense if they don't know they can have a license.
I see, so.
That's, you know.
So the process could be is that we, we approve pending the site plan review?
Subject to, subject to approval by the state, by the planning board, yes. Well, I mean, you could require a site plan review approval, then to come back with a new application, or, you know, put this public hearing, continue this to a further date, or you could, again, you know, make whatever you, if you choose to take some of it, make it contingent upon site plan review, site plan approval, you could say. There's a difference.
So, yes, there is. So, you know, through, through the chair, the, my initial thought is, is that there's already a business there.
Yeah.
Right, there's already vehicles there. So I'd be happy to talk, personally, I'd be happy to talk about approval, you know, pending, pending the.
Planning.
Pending the site plan review, so as opposed to having to continue would be where I would come from. Again, if it was brand new, maybe not, but we've already got a business there, yeah.
I agree.
Is that in the form of a motion?
And just to say, usually when these used car licenses come before you, they're not of a scale that, or in, or addition to an existing license that would trigger site plan approval. This one, this one does.
Okay. All right, I think we're, we're.
With anyone?
We need to close the public hearing before we can deliberate, so if you have nothing else, you can, you know, step back and listen to the rest of it.
Okay.
But, yeah. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing if there's no other comments or questions. I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Kelly, will you pull the board?
Yes.
Selectman Claybar?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Selectman DeJus?
Yes.
Chair of the board?
Yes. Thank you.
So I think we've started the discussion already, and I think, you know.
I'm willing to make a motion that we can discuss.
That we can approve based on.
Yeah.
The site plan review.
The conditional.
And so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, that we approve the request for a Class II used car dealer's license for Ash Owen and Jenkin Towing Incorporated, subject to a site plan review by the planning board.
Second, and, and approve.
And approve.
And approve.
We have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
So I didn't catch.
So just to be clear, the, the selectmen approved the plan, the site for five used cars? Based upon the approval of the site plan from the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Next is a public hearing. A request to approve the application for a change of stock interest, change of officers and directors, and pledge of stock on, on the on-premise all alcohol pouring license for SBJM Incorporated, doing business as Golden Greek located at 156 Lake Street in Webster.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we open the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Kelly, will you pull the board?
Yes.
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 I believe we have Mrs. Abraham here, are you here?
Yes.
And Attorney Truell?
Truex, yes, I'm here.
We're, the public hearing is opened, and we're evaluating a lot of the, the changes. It sounds like you're take, you're looking to take over the business and the alcohol license and change of material and.
Mr. Chair, I can explain the.
Thank you.
Mr. Members of the board, Attorney. Licensed, A, A Golden Greek. You can see with me remotely. She is currently the director of the corporation and also a 20% shareholder. And the application before you is a change of officers, directors, and stock interest. Now, Sylvia is buying out two of her partners, 50% interest in the corporation. And her husband, Shanuta Basilius, is gifting her his 25% interest in the corporation. And the two partners and her husband are resigning as president, treasurer, secretary, and director of the corporation. So as a result, Sylvia will now be the 100% shareholder, she'll be the sole officer and the sole director of the corporation. As for the purchase price, there is a purchase price being paid for the 50% interest from the two partners, and it's being paid by a promissory note. And therefore, as part of our application, those two partners are requesting the board approve a pledge of stock in the corporation as a collateral for that loan. Otherwise, none of the operations or the operation of the restaurant remains unchanged, and we would happy, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, for how long has this corporation been running, the Golden Greek?
Um, I'm going to say three years. Corporation's been two years, two full years.
And is.
The corporation answer.
Yeah, is Miss Ibrahim on premises, is she personally involved with the day-to-day operation of the restaurant?
Yeah, they, they run the place. The husband will still remain as the licensed manager of the business, of the corporation.
Any other questions from any board members? Okay, I'll entertain.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion, a second. Kelly, will you pull the board?
Selectman Davies?
Yes.
Selectman Claybar?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Selectman DeJus?
Yes.
Chair of the board?
Yes.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the, the board here?
I'm, I'm a little confused as to what we're being asked to do. I understand we're being asked to transfer the license.
The licorice.
But also. But the promissory note part of it, I'm a little confused with where, where do we come in there?
I think we're going to have a change of ownership, and it's all on the license, I believe, is that correct?
Well, I think we have to change the, approve the change of ownership, right?
No, this is, if I, if I may, members of the board, this is not a transfer, a typical transfer. This is a change of stock interest. The corporation remains the same, and the corporation remains as the license holder. So all you're doing is approving the change of the officers, directors, and the stock interest and, and the pledge of the, the shares of stock for the loan.
So the ownership is the same, it's just that the structure of the ownership has changed.
Yeah, the, the shareholders, I mean, you know, the corporation entity is, it's just who's the shareholder.
Yeah, understood, thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board? They've been open for two years with that corporation, and it's just a change within the corporation, so. Entertaining a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for a change of stock interest, change of officers and directors, and pledge of stock on the on-premises all alcohol pouring license for SBJM and doing business as Golden Greek, located at 156 Lake Street, Webster.
Second. We have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you still, are you still doing roasted chicken, Miss Ibrahim?
Yes, they are.
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
It's even better.
All right, thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's over time, right?
Uh, next is a, another public hearing?
Yeah.
A request to amend the entertainment license held by Indian Ranch Recreation Incorporated, located at 200 Gore Road, Webster. I'll need a motion to open this hearing.
Move that we open the hearing.
A motion.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, Kelly, will you pull the board?
Selectman Davies?
Yes.
Selectman Claybar?
Yes.
Selectman Rogers?
Yes.
Selectman DeJus?
Yes.
Chair of the board?
Yes.
Uh, is there anybody here from Indian Ranch? Or anybody that wants to speak as well? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
So you were looking to, you had explained that because of the, the booking scenario now in this industry with the other venues that you're competing with, that you're looking to expand?
Yeah, there's been a lot of change in the industry over the past probably 10 years, being a lot more competition in the industry, new venues opening up continuously, from breweries to, you know, casinos that have opened. And what we're finding is there's less bands out there and more competition trying to book them. And being a daytime venue is very rare. We've dealt with it for the past 20 years, but now we've seen an increase in artists that won't perform at night, artists that are traveling from, you know, Pennsylvania, Virginia, Canada, and they can't go from a nighttime show to a daytime show. And so that's where we're finding a lot of restrictions. The other issue we have is we book in September all the way through May, we book multiple offers, and we are only limited to putting in six nighttime offers, because that's all our, we're allowed on the current license. But what happens is we have to sit on those offers, and if we have a seventh artist that can only do a night show, we can't put in an offer for that artist, because those six were, until we get a yea or nay from those artists, it's basically a contract. So if we aren't able to put in more offers than we're allowed, then we could lose multiple artists, which we actually have a couple of artists right now that we're having some issues with.
Tough business.
Would this change the, the, I couldn't quite tell from the materials, the total number of shows that you're doing in the year, or would it just switch some from day to night?
Um, it'd be switching up from day and night, I mean, we're pretty much limited season-wise anyways, through May through September, one or two in October. So, we, I mean, we could possibly, but we're not trying to add, like, we're not trying to add, let's do Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, we're trying to, we still only want, you know, two. And honestly, the truth is, if we have three shows, we're maximizing our staff, it's exhausting for everybody, so doing more than two in a row is really, that's what we aim for. If we end up with three.
So you're basically keeping approximately the same number of shows, but you're converting six from daytime to, from, yeah, from daytime to evening?
Right, it's possible.
It's possible.
Yeah.
What was the rationale for no back-to-back shows, just out of curiosity? Is it just the, the noise issue or?
It stemmed from 10 years ago when we went to put the boat in the water, and we had a lot of people upset about the boat, so it's the first time we had back-to-back shows ever, and people were calling up and complaining, a few people, I have all the records, about the noise levels. And that was probably the first time we were really doing night shows, and we didn't really get the logistics, and since then, we've put a lot of things into place, timing of the shows. As a venue ourselves, we set up a decibel level that we won't let artists play above to keep the sound levels down, so there's definitely, so that's where the, where the back-to-back came in. So I think what happened is at that time, when the boat was going in, people were calling and complaining, trying to hit, hurt the Indian Ranch business, and then the board of selectmen wanted to kind of put something in place just to appease people at the time.
The other thing I found interesting in your note was the fact that some of your bands are now going to the bigger venues as, as the warm-up bands, and it makes it difficult?
Yeah, that makes it difficult, I mean, the Fenways and the Gillette stadiums, those take probably two of our main artists each time. So we've lost quite a bit to those, a lot of the new up-and-coming artists we used to get, the country artists, they'll go play those stadiums, and then they'll almost skip over ours and go to the bigger ones, so it's. It's a competitive industry.
Okay, how many shows a year do you have now? Just a little bit confused by.
It's usually between 28 to 30.
Okay. And only, how many of those are night shows right now?
The max is six, but we're, like I said, we're lucky if we get six, we probably had four or five this year, maybe?
All right, so that's all you're looking to do is change the number of night dates? That's all you're looking to do with, with regard to the, the number of shows, it's just? It's just the night shows?
The night shows, okay.
So you're still planning on being around 28 shows a year?
Yeah, it'll range from like 28 to 30. There's only so many weekends.
Right.
And how far in advance do you have to book?
Uh, we are already booking now. We start in September.
I think that's why you were here last meeting, too.
Yeah.
You have to book, lock something in.
And the problem with coming in one, like, every once, like, every time we have an issue is sometimes we have to give an artist an answer right then and there. And then even like a Sunday night play, they could all of a sudden say, oh wait, but it's not gonna be the 14th, what about the 21st? 'Cause that fits our schedule better. And it's like, well, we, do we come back? Or do, you know, what do we do now?
The, the, Sunday night, the addition of allowing Sunday night shows on holiday weekends, what's the potential for, for shows over a three-day weekend? Three shows?
Yeah.
'Cause you could have back-to-backs, so.
We could, yeah. But I mean, and it's only a Sunday night would be only if an artist couldn't do it. Otherwise, it would be a regular Sunday show like we have now.
So, so you could possibly do three evening shows on a holiday weekend?
I think it would be a miracle.
But I mean, the three would be, the three would be included in?
Oh, yeah, I think we're thinking of the...
Yeah, the worst-case scenario, I guess, yeah, yeah. And, and to add to that, usually for the holiday shows, it has to be a very good artist because...
Yeah.
So for us to get three incredibly amazing artists on a holiday weekend would be, would be pretty rare.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for them? No? Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Okay. Could you please step back? The hearing is going on, so listen.
Good evening.
Good evening. We'll wait for your sit and then if you could, please state your names.
My name is Kate Rubin. I'm a butter at 5 and 9 Lakeview Road of Indian Ranch. My neighbors are here and I must say, the small showing of all the butters is, it's amazing that any, over the years, any Indian Ranch issues always come in the winter when butters are not here. But always the winter, it's a cold night, some of the elderly can't get out, others are away, and I must say, in all honesty, that many butters are intimidated and feel retribution. And that's why the not, um, I must say that Indian Ranch's license says no back-to-back shows. He broke it twice this summer. I went to your office, Mr. LaFawn, in September and shared those dates with your secretaries and they were going to give that to you. I did not hear from them. My neighbors were waiting. We didn't hear. That's a violation, right in the beginning. Next, I made bullet points. Most shows have 75 boats in the cove. Almora is detrius every morning after a show on our beaches. They use, the butters use the cove as a bathroom. It's non-swimable. I'm sorry, Mr. Becker isn't here to tell you the bacteria level after each show. The, our boats cannot go out and we can't come in because of the traffic. The traffic for each show can start at the exit of 395 in both directions. We can't leave, we can't get off. But the most important bullet point is the decibel level. 13 years ago, we hired a Boston acoustic engineering firm called Kavanaugh Tochi. They're quite famous, they've done the Tweeter Center, they did the Sidney Opera House. We hired them to come to Webster. They put meters in the trees during shows. In Massachusetts, the approved decibel level for an outdoor venue between 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM is 60. After 6:00 PM, it's 50. Why it's down? Well, Kavanaugh Tochi wrote to Indian Ranch and said, "Your decibel level is over 100, maybe 120." Indian Ranch, we hired an attorney, Mark Odanza, who wrote the letter to Indian Ranch with Kavanaugh Tochi's results. The owners of Indian Ranch tore it up, sent it back, and said, "Take me to court." Is that really being a good neighbor? And is that really an answer? It's thousands and thousands to go to court. Now, I and others of the neighbors have installed our own decibel readers at our expense because it's a monthly charge. This is a decibel level reader. The highest it goes is, thank you, 1/10th on the, on the cellphone reader. It went beyond that during the shows. Now, I know, when, when I said to you, there'll be retaliation. Every time an Indian Ranch issue comes up, the retaliation is, turn the speakers louder. And lo and behold, after the Kavanaugh Tochi Acoustics Engineers sent them that, they went beyond 1/120. That's being a good neighbor? Next, um, the warm-up shows, the warm-ups. Most shows in the afternoon are 2 o'clock, maybe 1, maybe 3. The warm-ups on a Sunday morning at the highest decibel level are 8:30. On Saturday mornings, they're been 11 at 9. Every Sunday show has started at 8:30, Sunday morning, with the decibel level beyond belief. It's avaricious, board members, to give the right to have back-to-back shows. We live there. There are hundreds of us and we, we've been good neighbors, we haven't complained, we've lived with this, we understand it, but to add more, putting more fuel on the fire is unreasonable, board members, at this point. They broke the license that you gave them, the no back-to-back shows already, and I'm sure your office can find the record that I gave you, and if not, I will produce a copy of it.
Just to, just to clarify, it's my understanding that they are not allowed to have back-to-back night concerts. Not you, not that you can't have a day and then a following night. It's back-to-back nights. That's my understanding of the license? I see some nodding in the crowd, yes.
So can you understand, uh, plea, and this room would have been filled. It's a holiday season, it's cold, so, there's a 96-year-old woman right here, sitting here who came out when it's 18 degrees out, as a, right here as a neighbor. Please be considerate of us. It's avaricious, once again, to want more and more and more. We live here. I'm waiting, other people will speak.
Please, uh, yeah, I need your names, please, if you would.
Hi, I'm Nathanae Bryant at 69 Lakeview Road. Biggest thing is...
Your address?
69 Lakeview Road.
Okay.
Biggest thing is the decimals. I have five kids. We wake up in the morning without shaking.
When you say morning?
Nine, tenish, on the weekend.
This is on weekend or weeks?
Eight, nine.
Weekend?
Yes. And I have five kids, you know, without shaking. We get to concerts, but to add more, like you said, is just adding fuel to the fire.
Well, from, from what I'm hearing, the total number of concerts aren't really significantly changing. It's just the time of venue.
That's what we don't want. We don't want more nights. We can't, some of the shows end up...
Well, you don't want nights, you don't want days.
We don't want, we didn't say that.
You, you said the mornings.
We don't want the morning, he's talking decibel levels. 8:30 on Sunday mornings. That's not a good neighbor.
The traffic is the other issue.
I'm gonna explain the traffic.
We can't get home sometimes.
Well, it's, yeah, but that's...
Wait highway just to get home. What if there was an incident, one of my children were named, can't get through, or ride a truck?
The name again? Okay.
I noticed that like with the later concerts, guys, it's a lot more alcohol. I know that they really don't have control of people on the way, but with the later concerts, everybody's got the pot in there. I watch people get on their boats from Indian Ranch. I watched a guy last, last year, he did a crash right into the dock, the kid standing on the dock. Sooner or later, something's gonna happen. If there's a class action suit and housing laws, who's gonna answer that? And, and it's been, I think it was three years ago, if I'm not mistaken, there was a fatality leaving with a motorcycle going up Route 68 from Indian Ranch.
Drunk.
Well, I'm just saying, it's an awful lot of alcohol on the later on shows.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Miller, 69 Lakeview Road. First of all, I don't even know if we were supposed to be notified about this. I'm...
200 feet?
I wasn't, no, and I am, and a butter at 9, Lakeview Road. I didn't, did not have the notification. I was told by a neighbor.
Excuse me?
I received a certified butters list from the assessment office for butters within 300 feet. And certified mailings were out, so they're on the list.
Number nine is within that.
Okay, I was just stating that I didn't know whether or not that was supposed to happen. And I am agree, in agreement with the, the traffic is atrocious. Living there, you either have to stay home and not, you better plan, I'm not going anywhere from, for like four or five hours on a Sunday or Saturday afternoon, or plan on being away because you don't have an option of being able to get home. I, I've literally sat in traffic back to the highway to go home. To me, that's, that's unexplainable, that's, that's, I don't wanna say unconscionable, but it's just, it's not, it's not, it's not fair to everybody that lives in that vicinity. And yes, there are, there are times when the music is loud, I can even hear it when the windows are all closed. And I'm probably 500 feet from, from the, from the ranch.
Yeah.
So, in...
Well, it's, um, you know, on the water too, so it's gonna carry.
Right. But in the late-night ones, I mean, a lot of times, I go to bed at 9 o'clock at night and not that, I'm not saying that that has to happen, but there are, and it does cause more drinking, more loud, it's just a lot more loudness lasting later in the day, in the night. I'm gonna end, I think.
Thank you.
As a neighbor.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Valerie Smith. I'm at 17 South Shore Road and I would like to speak to the, the decibel level because I can't even talk on the telephone in my house sometimes, it's so loud. And, um, and to have that at night, and it's because it's, it's out of the water and it amplifies on the water. And because this is an outside venue, I mean, if they wanted to have it inside, that would be one thing, but having it outside at night and adding more to it, it is a problem. I can't have a conversation on my porch.
You have to believe, they are forcing us out, residents. And again, this room would have been filled. Seven people, seven families have left for the winter. Four of us had no transportation, we are there in their eighties, and we're speaking to them.
Yeah. No, I understand that, uh...
At that waterfront Mary's, they could only have outside entertainment until 7:30.
Yes.
And, and some of the shows, the nighttime shows start at 7:30.
And end after 11.
It's, it's a case by case, uh, you know, each venue can apply and receive or not receive certain things that they ask for, you know, it's not uniform.
Indian Ranch is sold out at all their shows. Why more? You know, we are all working. How much more do you need? But be a good neighbor, we've put up with this for a long, long time. And when I said retribution, again, I'm saying, mark my words and my decibel level. Because of this meeting, I can only imagine what the decibel level will be at the first show in June to punish us for doing this.
Anything else from?
Could I ask a question? When was the Kavanaugh study done?
I can't hear you.
When was the Kavanaugh study done?
13 years ago. And from 13 years, it's only increased and increased. I can also get you their records. They're international. They, I paid a courtship for them to come to Webster Lake. And they did it more than once. It wasn't one show, it was maybe four shows, a Saturday, a Sunday, a night one. And the, these meters are put in trees. But can you imagine tearing that up and saying, "Take me to court," through our attorney, Mark Odanza? No way. We're working people. Thousands and thousands to go to court. Is that a good neighbor? And now we want more? Please understand our, our major concern.
So through the chair, could you just help me? You keep on saying more and more, but if I'm understanding things correctly, we're not talking about more concerts.
More honey.
But we're not talking about more concerts, correct?
We're talking about night ones, 71 night ones.
We're talking about up to six additional night ones, okay. And that's what you're objecting to?
Absolutely.
And the decibel level at night? And the decibel level at night?
It's, um, actually the decibel level at night, I, I mean, and I'm just thinking logically because during the day, we're all busy mowing the lawn, but I can still hear it even over my lawnmower. But you're busy and there's...
Yeah.
Activity going on.
Yeah, you have more distractions.
Exactly, so you don't notice it. But at nighttime, it's quiet. So for me, I literally have to close my windows to be able to watch a TV show, you know. I can't, how do, how do you sit out? I mean, if it's, I used to love the music from Indian Ranch, and it's not their fault, but a lot of what some people have fallen music, to me is not, I don't know what it is. So for me to be able to sit out at my fire pit at night on, on, on an evening when something like that is going on, it's very disenchanted.
And heaven forbid you wanna listen to something like your own music, put on your radio or something.
Yeah.
You can't, it's just noise. You have to listen. And, and I don't mind, I, I enjoy the music too, but to a point, you know, I don't enjoy it.
No, I'm listening.
Or at 10, even.
Any other questions from board members to?
Is there any way to control decibel level?
Yeah, you turn the volume. You put the amplifier on six instead of eight.
Well, you'd have to, I, I should, I'm gonna change the website. Is there any way to monitor the decibel level?
Oh, yeah. It's an app.
Yes, it is an app. We can keep track of it and submit it to you in this document.
The thing is, it's so directional, depending on the wind.
Yes.
Nice cloud cover and...
And the speakers.
And, and I thought I read someplace where there are controls, I mean, you talked about telling the bands they could only play so loudly, so I guess I'd like to hear a little bit of what's going, what's going wrong.
Yeah, something they've not been told, because they've been playing louder and louder. And I wish you could contact the Webster Police and ask for their police log, because every time we can't talk, we can't go outside, we can't function, we call the police. The police said, exactly, we, there's nothing we can do, you have to go to the selectmen, but we shall keep a log. That log is gigantic. And I appreciate that the police have at least written it down, and this board can ask to see that. And it's not life, it just isn't a life.
Okay, thank you.
Be sincere, do you believe us?
Do I believe you? Of course I believe you.
Thank you for your time.
There was questions on the decibel level, do you, do you have any comment on that? Because that is a concern.
So, when this issue happened years ago, we sat and we discussed what a decibel level should be at the soundboard, and for a concert, it's ninety-eight decibels. We have stuck to that at the soundboard. We had one show last year where we actually had to go up on stage and have their sound engineer turn the sound down with a police officer, because their sound people take control of the soundboard.
Mid-range, actually.
Yeah, so we monitor it. And we actually had a band that wanted to play that would not agree to a ninety-eight decibel sound limit, and we did not let them play. So we are, we do know about the sound limits.
Now, please explain, the, the soundboard is behind the speakers, isn't it?
The soundboard is in the middle of the audience. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the speakers are facing the soundboard.
Right, so, so that might not be the optimal decibel output. Is that, am I correct in stating that?
If it goes, if you're, so if you're in the audience with the way the speakers are, halfway back, that's where the sound's being controlled.
Right.
So if it goes past that...
Yeah. But direction's that's the point and then calls out. So I'm, you're, you're not in full, the cone's not fully out where your soundboard is, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
So is that getting the full decibels is what would be my question?
Well, it'd be getting...
Is it greater, you know, further out with it?
The further, the further back it goes, the less it would be...
I don't know, but...
But I think, at the end of the day, you're, you're setting the soundboard at a level, correct?
Correct.
So it's not like they're...
Yeah.
So they're setting it at ninety-eight or ninety, did you say?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
Yeah.
Is there a Massachusetts rule that we have noise regulations?
I think there's a suggestion.
I'm looking at it right now. I, I, I want to read it to you. In Massachusetts, an outdoor, outdoor venue, seven to, seven AM to six in the morning, sixty. After six, it's fifty. No more than seventy decibels ever.
Where, where does that come from?
I just went Massachusetts order of approved decibel level for an outdoor venue in this state.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the actual source?
No, I, yeah, no.
I mean, I mean, that's...
I mean...
Just curious.
A lawnmower makes seventy decibels.
No, I mean, I mean, the source of, I mean, the source of what she's reading, that's all.
We did a study way back, when, like a tractor trailer truck is over a hundred and something decibels.
I know a little bit.
And I, and I also take a little bit of offense that we're not a good neighbor, I think we are very well...
We hold our neighborhood traffic for those roads that come out for a venue.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I add one more thing?
Yes.
I have been speaking to Mr. Wigglesworth all fall. After the shows, the lease, the license says that gates should be opened to all Indian residents, because right now, when the gates close, we only have community road to go up and down, an ambulance, anything. The road is horrible. After the last show, the license says the secondary gate at Indian Ranch has to be opened. Mr. Wigglesworth has contacted Indian Ranch. They opened it, they closed it. We are in December. They have only opened it permanently two weeks ago. If that, maybe a week. Jim, that's not a good neighbor. It just isn't a good neighbor.
We open, like, we open the gate after our camping season is over and the campers have left, which is November first. I think somebody called because they wanted to make sure they could take their boat out through our property and didn't want to drive it up community road, so we opened the gate for the weekends so those people could take their boats out.
Okay.
And that was during this, before November first.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Thank you. I'd like to take a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Kelly, can you pull the void?
Selectman Day?
Yes.
Selectman Day?
Yes.
Selectman Roger?
Yes.
Selectman Deacon?
Yes.
Chairman Clark?
Yes.
All right, I think we've, we've heard, you know, both the pros and cons. I think the venue has been here for, you know, since I was a child, there's always been music there. And I think it's something that, when you live near any venue, whether it's a, you know, indoor theater or an outdoor venue or a sporting event or anything, there's going to be traffic. I mean, that, that's a fact of living in, in those sorts of areas, I mean, that doesn't The, the license, what's been requested is, according to my understanding, we'll have to monitor this, is approximately twenty-eight to thirty shows a year, looking for a difference in time. We've heard, you know, from the eight-thirty in the morning complaints till the ten o'clock at night noise complaints. So, in my mind, it's going to be the same number of, of shows at various times. I don't know if there's any comment from the, from other members of the board?
Well, I find myself through the chair wrestling here a little bit, only because if there's a night show, I think there'd be less boats in the cove than there would be for a day show, for sure.
It'd probably be more.
And the hearings closed. The, you know, and I live in the lake and I've, I've been in the cove during concerts, and you can certainly get in and out. The decibel level is the thing that gets to me more than anything, that I, that I'm thinking about here. And I guess I'd, I'd like some clarification on other, other Massachusetts laws that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, I'm concerned about increasing the number of night shows from six to twelve, you know, given the fact that there is a problem with the decibel range.
And through the chair, so I live, I'm, I'm like a mile away, and depending on if the wind's in the right direction...
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I can hear it too, you know, down there, which isn't a bad thing at times, but if I can hear it, so I, I do have a concern about the decibel level.
And I can hear it too, clear across Middle Pond.
Yeah.
But, you know, but that, excuse me, through the chair, that all being said, you know, we take a look at our, putting together our vision statement, and one of the things that we're trying to do is to make and keep Webster a, a destination, and I personally think that Indian Ranch is a big part of that, and will remain a big part of that for us all. I'm, I'm just wondering if...
Yeah, we could get some information on appropriate decibel levels.
And I think measured different...
But obviously, we...
And I think there's something in the bylaw.
Can't do that tonight, obviously.
Say that again?
I think there's something in the bylaw, too. I was looking for it, I can't find it.
Through the chair.
It's very, decibel levels is very...
Yeah.
Like from the soundboard, that, that's in the middle, the speakers are up high overhead there.
Yeah.
They're not aiming down, they're aiming out, and you're sitting down on the control board, you're not going to get, you know, if it's ninety-eight decibels, it could be a hundred and twenty decibels going out.
I, I agree that with you, but I do have that concern, you know, we're talking about the decibel level, they've been complaining about the decibel level, and if we're going to be changing the number of night shows from six to twelve, you know, I, I think it is different to have a night show than a day show. And, you know, if you're going to raise it from six to twelve for evening shows, I think we really should be taking a look at the, the decibel level.
And I'm as conflicted as Marcus, because definitely this is, we want to make this a destination, and Indian Ranch is a big factor in that, but if there are some regulations that, or some, some best practices that could be applied, that would...
We can do some homework on that. Obviously, the public hearing is closed, but just, you know, to what extent you wish to continue this deliberation and possible vote, that's, that can be indefinite. I mean, before your next meeting, we can certainly get you all the information we have available with regard to such, such things.
Through the chair just quick, so with the way this, the, it reads though, it's supposed to end at ten though, correct? That's either night and all, Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Okay. Okay, just making sure.
And if I understood it, Sundays were on holiday weekends only, right? Sunday nights?
No. No, adding to, right.
They're adding Sunday night shows on holiday weekends, but there are Sunday night shows.
A few, three, is it, or six?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing? The public hearing is closed.
So we can, we cannot put it to, to a vote tonight and ask for more information and, and get some more information relative to the decibel. I think that's the, that's the biggest thing I'm hearing, is the decibel level. And, you know, the, the rest of it is, if, you know, there's going to be traffic, there is going to be some debris, that's a fact of life around any, any venue that, what do you do, close the venues down? You know, I don't know. But, yes, one more time, through the chair, no matter what we decide, there's going to be twenty-eight to thirty times during the year...
Yeah.
Where there's going to be a show there.
Right.
It's going to be bringing people in, going to be money, you know?
Yeah.
The restaurants nearby going to get their business and all that, and the question is, is that an additional four, five, or six times a year, is that going to happen in the evening instead of the daytime?
Right.
That's really what we're talking, because...
The question in my mind is the decibel level.
Yeah, that, that is true, but the issue here is the, the decibel level.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, whenever the concert's held.
Yeah.
So if you want to put this on the next agenda, and we can do some homework on decibel levels in advance.
Yeah.
And best practices, you know, is there a rule, but are, are there other things that people can do?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look into a little bit. Outdoor venues, there's plenty of them in Massachusetts. So moving on, uh... No? So we're not going to take a vote tonight? No, we're going to put it out, no, we're not going to get the vote, we're going to put it for more information.
Yeah.
We're going to have to...
To the next meeting?
Yeah. Next is Ted Atlas, discussion regarding the town's adoption of the Community Preservation Act. And Ted, of course, is the chairman of the Webster Historical Commission, amongst other titles.
Don't say that too loud, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for putting me on the agenda, which ended up being kind of last minute, so I appreciate all the work done in the selectman's office, town administrator, to get me on the agenda before the first of the year, at which point I will be south.
Don't rub it in.
I know.
You're telling us that?
Well, I can always remote in, I suppose, right? Just to give you an update, that the, you know, Webster Historical Commission and the Town of Webster, about a year ago, we began work on our preservation plan for the Town of Webster, and that has since been completed. We're pleased with the final report and hope to publicize that and get that out on our website and make it available for all to see, but we're really excited about, you know, the final report. Quite a lot of hard work went into it over the past year, appreciate all the help that we got from the local committees and community and the Board of Selectment in support of it, and that's helped out a lot. The idea, of course, is to preserve historical significance in our community and what it means to the future of Webster moving forward. So really, the preservation plan is about the future, not the past. That being said, they, the report includes recommendations, and some of them are on different levels, but I can tell you that priority one recommendation of our final report was to organize and advocate for the adoption of the Community Preservation Act. It's probably the most important first step in the implementation of our historical preservation plan, and it not being solely historic preservation, because it also includes conservation, outside activities, et cetera, which we can get into. The Community Preservation Act, though, is a tool that's used and helps communities preserve open space and historic sites, creates affordable housing, and develops outdoor recreational facilities. So there's a lot to the Community Preservation Act. It also helps local economies, expands housing opportunities, construction jobs, et cetera. It was enacted in the year two thousand, and what it basically does is it allows communities to create a community preservation fund for open space protection, historic preservation, affordable housing. The monies are typically raised through the imposition of a surcharge. Cap is three percent, and it's on the tax levy against real property in town. To get CPA adopted, it has to go first before, much like we do when we're building a new school or renovating as we currently are, it needs to go to a town meeting and get approval to be put on the ballot, and then it'll go to an election where the community will have the opportunity to vote. So those are kind of the steps.
Ted, can I just, is, is that fifty percent majority at town meeting or two-thirds?
I believe it's fifty, yeah. I believe it's just a simple majority.
Correct. That's to get it on the ballot, right?
As far as the town meeting goes, yes, yes. I could clarify that, but I do not know of it being otherwise from my information that In doing the first steps, what I think we're asking the Board of Selectment right now, if they would take the lead in establishing a community preservation committee to investigate and come back with some recommendations on the Community Preservation Act. It would be like a study committee. They would have plenty of time to work, but we're not looking to do anything on the quick here. There's ample time for them to get their work done, to explore, to ask questions. There's also an agency, the Community Preservation Act. There's also an agency, the Community Preservation Act Council, a state council that provides information. It helps with their planning, their study, and ultimately can also assist with getting the word out through public relations, et cetera, as you go closer towards implementing, or at least getting the vote for town meeting and then at a ballot. I'm thinking that, you know, this committee could be formed with representatives, obviously the Webster Historical Commission would like to be involved. I would certainly like to see the Board of Selectmen possibly have a member on this exploratory committee, as well as affordable housing, the housing, and open space recreation. If there's anything or any other committee that you think would be important to serve on that.
Yeah.
I would, I would ask you to take that, you know, into consideration in doing so. You know, we would probably be looking at a town meeting, we probably, I'm thinking this study committee probably wouldn't be ready, earliest would be the fall, for a fall town meeting, if not the following spring town meeting.
Okay.
There is a lot of information to gather, you know, there's, you want to get as much information as you can on the communities. I mean, right now, there's over 200 communities involved with this already, and they are already.
In various stages of the process?
They're approved. They've already been approved.
Okay.
Yeah, and they're utilizing CPA. I know our town administrator came from a community that was one of the first ones to implement it.
The good old days.
Took full advantage.
100%.
When it was 100% match. It's probably less than that now, because as the more communities get on, it stretches the funding a little bit. There are also different levels, and you can get into all of that, but those who implement, 3% is the max you can, you can charge, but you could go all the way down to a half a percent, if you so choose.
Yes.
We just wanted to say the base state match is about 18%.
Oh, 18%. Okay.
Except I think there were, I think there were something like three or four cities or towns that got 100%.
Right.
Yes.
I have a question to try to find out.
Do we want to let Ted finish, or?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, that's about it. If you have any questions, I can, you know, explain a little bit more about how it works.
Point out one thing real quick, and Guinness did, said I was in a town for many years that used the CPA with great success, and reimbursement rates were different back in the day, but one of the things to remember is, this is funded from fees that Massachusetts residents paid to the registry.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
So, when citizens of Webster incur registry fees, that money's going to another community right now.
In fact, since January 1st of this year, there were 2,187 registrations from Webster, and Governor Baker, I think a couple of years ago, increased the fee. So, that's over $100,000 that the other cities are going to be enjoying in the future.
From Webster?
From Webster.
Yeah.
Yes. And I'm trying to get a record of how much money Webster residents have put into the system for the use of our 199 other, or 200 other citizens.
Are there any other federal programs or anything for historical preservation?
There might be, but, you know, they don't, you know, this is, and there are several grants and opportunities out there, but this establishes a fund in town.
I understand.
Which then you establish a CPA committee, which is made up of five to nine members of all different boards, and you could have, you know, finance and all, and they look at community preservation, open space, affordable housing, and, you know, and explore opportunities, where is the money best spent now? Now we've got this money in, now we've collected this money, the state has, you know, contributed, you know, and start establishing priorities for what to do with the money. And that's the exciting part of, of the whole plan, is the implementing of, of the resources to put back into the community.
Right.
And in historical areas, outside areas, outdoors, affordable housing. An example might be, you know, allowing like the historical section from downtown, which is part of an historical district, to do uniform signage or something that would be paid for out of these monies, in order to, you know, make the downtown area more attractive to.
Has the commission done any work on developing districts, or would that be the responsibility of this group?
No, no, the responsibility of the group is basically the Community Preservation Act, to get the act adopted.
Okay.
In other words, study it, find out the implications, how does it work, what is the best way for Webster to implement this program? You know, we know it's a charge on a person's, the real estate bill, how much do we want it to be? There are exemptions to that, there, you know, seniors can be exempted from paying, you can exempt typically the first, and it's based off of your tax bill.
Yeah.
But you're like, the first $100,000 of your assessed value could be exempt as well. So, there are different levels to all of this, and that's what this study committee would be working on as they get, you know, get more involved.
But limitations on, on how that money can be spent?
Well, I'm sure the act, yeah, I'm sure the state would, you know, have a list of priorities or recommendations, or, you know, areas where they are allowed and where they're not allowed.
Do you have any idea how large a committee would be functional, or?
For an exploratory committee?
Yes.
I'm just thinking four or five, I don't think it needs to be huge.
Okay.
You know, I think a small committee would be appropriate. Of course, it always, if you wanted to accept volunteers from the town, that's not, I know, but, I mean, you could put it out there.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you could say, we'd like a member of these different committees to be on it, and then maybe have two or three residents who have no affiliation with any of the commissions or committees in town, but are really interested in historic preservation.
Yeah.
Et cetera. I think it would be favorable to have them on there, and that kind of divvies up the work as well.
Yeah.
When it comes down to the.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question as to Ted, are you proposing a study committee to make a recommendation to the town, or an advocacy committee?
Well, I mean, that's something I think maybe the selectman could determine, you know, advocacy is a good way to put it, because they would be advocating to put this forward as they propose at a town meeting, and ultimately, you know, if it's approved on the ballot.
Any other questions from Ted? Certainly food for thought, and we'll have to give it a little thought, and we'll.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm, thank you for hearing, hearing me out again tonight at the last minute, but I appreciate it. Again, I think it's a, it's amazing that the study that we did listed this as the first priority for us, so that's why we're kind of here first, and we know it takes time, and it's going to take some time to, to get it all together, but let's start.
You got to start, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks for having me.
Good night, Ted. Enjoy being with yourselves. It's getting cold. It's getting cold as well. Yeah. Okay, next item is discussion on possible vote. To, I, oh, before we go on, I think we should give it a little thought and then come back next meeting and put it on the agenda for next meeting, after we get time to.
CPA?
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Okay, next item is discussion on possible vote to approve the following, the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the bonds authorized by the votes of the town passed May 31st, 2024, is hereby determined pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, to be as follows. Number one, the fire pumper truck was borrowed for $1.2 million and has a useful life of 10 years. Number two is a fire dive rescue boat, which was $150,000 borrowed with a useful life of 10 years. Is that?
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, as you well know, fortunately or unfortunately, when we issue bonds, you have a lot of signing to do. So, ultimately, this board issues those bonds, and in order for, to determine whether or not something is bondable, there has to be some declaration that piece of equipment or building is of enough useful life to be eligible to be borrowed. So, a 10-year, something with a useful life of 10 years is eligible to be borrowed. So, so this is in advance of ultimately you signing notes, and also ultimately, Tim and Tina and town's advisory people will have to formulate and package some sort of bond, that bonds that are the most advantageous based upon all these approvals. So, this is really just approving amount in a useful life for the purposes of packaging up bonding that you ultimately have to approve and sign.
How did you come about with the 10 years?
Pumper truck is more like 50 years.
Yeah, I know.
So, I guess technically, when the vote was originally taken to authorize, this is considered equipment under that section of the law, and by default, it's five-year property. If we were to borrow, probably not the rescue boat, but the pumper truck over five years, that would spike our non-excluded debt service, would really put a lot of pressure on the other part of the budget. So, in order to, yeah, spread it out or flatten it and keep it within our plan, we want to do both of these borrowings over the 10-year, and that should, you know, yeah, keep, keep an even rate.
Can I get the discussion from the board?
Thanks, Ted.
Thanks.
Take a vote to approve, and let Tim go home.
I make a motion that we approve the 10-year useful life for the borrowing. Useful life for the borrowing of the department vehicles, a fire pumper truck for 10 years, and the fire, the fire dive rescue boat for 10 years.
Second. We have a motion, the second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you. Next, renewal of the licenses to the air conditioning.
We still have, we still have Barbara. Don't forget that.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Poor Barbara.
Next is discussion on the request by Webster Museum Incorporated to review the proposed exterior site project and signage for the Samuel Slater Experience located 31 Ray Street.
I'm just sitting this way.
Hi, Bob.
Hello.
So, I think we, we heard from, last we met, we heard from various departments and, who expressed their comments and concerns, and I think the, probably the biggest things were the traffic, and of course, like we talked about, the stage, and more so the purpose of, you know, I know you're trying, you know, there's been a lot of things thrown out on what you're going to use it for. I think the opportunity is there to recoup some of the money to keep the museum viable, but beyond that, we don't really know.
Yeah, and that's, that's exactly right. We want to try to make the museum a sustainable entity. We don't have the, we can't reach the sustainability level just simply with admission tickets. It's simply not possible.
Yeah.
And therefore, and unlike many, many nonprofit entities, we're allowed to engage in unrelated, unrelated activity, and that can even be a profit-making activity. The, the laws of Massachusetts and the IRS don't exclude us from doing that, and so that's what we're, what we're asking for to do, is simply to hold events on a small space that will allow us to increase our revenue. Now, there are, there are a number of things, and I read through, I had the benefit, the town administrator sent me the questions, so I, I did have a chance to look at those, and I appreciate that, and I do have, I can answer them individually, but in general, I, I have, I want to point out that the space we're talking about is about a half an acre. That's the event space. So, it's simply not big enough for a carnival, or a circus, or anything of any, any size. You know, we're talking very, very, something that's going to be very limited in scope. So, I'd like to think of it more as, as events for fundraising for the museum, that's really what we're after. And so, so, and I think, like I said, that's not unlike what nonprofits are allowed to do, even though the activity is for profit. There are other examples of that, like a church can have a car wash, St. Joe's down the street has gem rock shows, you know, so, so those are unrelated activities, and as a nonprofit, we should be allowed to do those as well.
Yeah, the only, as you well know, this land has been leased by the town to that corporation for events, so I think there's a little more to it where, you know, the things you pointed out, you know, the profit and loss is, is what they make from a car wash or whatever. I think we have to be attuned that it's going to create traffic and potentially noise and congestion, and we have to realize that that can't be at the town's expense totally, should, you know, should we be looking at some fair structure, what the P and L is from this endeavor, you know? In other words, I think it would be hard pressed for the selectman to accept the fact that there's going to be increased activity and noise in that area of town, and we want to have some control on what, what the profit is, you know, we want to see the museum, but we don't want to see, at the expense of the town, and especially the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Large profits, you know?
But what is the problem with making a profit that helps sustain the museum?
Because it's town, it's going to have some strain on the neighborhood, and the selectman controlled the lease.
I understand that you don't want us to make a lot of noise or so on, but I don't understand, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand why it, you feel there's a constraint on us making, doing fundraising on the space to sustain the museum.
It's my opinion only, I mean, I, I feel that, you know, this is town leased property, it was leased for something, now something else is being asked for. I think it would be not, we have no control on how much events you have, how much activity goes in that neighborhood, we haven't discussed that.
Okay.
So, how should we, how should we do, what should we do? How should we proceed then?
I have a few thoughts on this. First, when we sat here last month, we presented to the town a vision that the Board of Selectmen had, and that vision is that Webster be a destination place, and it's based on the heritage of the Slaters, and what we have in town now is the Slater Museum, that is really a big draw, I think. I don't know if you go by the Slater Museum in this land that we're talking about, but it doesn't look good right now. It's got a big pile of dirt in the back, and it's not usable, and this is a betterment thing, in my opinion. And I don't know how many of you have been involved with other museums, especially small museums, house museums. I have been, I've been a docent, a researcher down at Ripon Lodge in Virginia, and all the little museums like that have venue. the little museums like that have venue events like weddings. They're not huge, but they rent them and they use them. And this isn't a lot of land. If you go by it, it's just a small period of, bit of land that is going to be landscaped and could be used for a variety of, of different things. And in terms of traffic, yeah, when they have baseballs and different types of field games, there's always traffic in that area, and you need to bring the, the people, the butters in and be good neighbors. But it also needs to be coordinated, and that can happen. If I had a dollar for every time somebody said to me, gee, I didn't know that event was happening, and how do we coordinate? And we don't coordinate in Webster very well, we don't have a calendar, but it can happen too. You can coordinate and deal with some of those issues. So I think it's a, a betterment issue, and I think that just landscaping that land and using it for events like a wedding, World War II reenactment, weekend, it's my favorite.
She's been on that bandwagon.
And even, even a weaving weekend out on the grass would be fantastic, and it would keep Webster on the map and make it a destination. So those are my two cents.
Through the chair, if I might, I find myself agreeing with everybody. I mean, I love the Samuel Slater Museum, and it has brought great things to the town, and I think it will continue to bring things to the town. That all being said, and I, and I agree with the idea of it being a betterment, you know, everything will look better. But I do worry, worry is too strong a word. I think we need to think about, does this have the potential to overwhelm the neighborhood? And so, and so maybe in conjunction with a request for what you want to have happen here, I would like to see a proposal in terms of what we're going to do there, not just that we have the ability to do some stuff there, so that there is some understanding or controls even on what kind of venues will happen, maybe when they'll happen. If I remember right, we're talking about lights, I don't know what that does to people in the neighborhood at night. So, you know, I would love to see this happen, to be frank with you, but I think it has to be done very thoughtfully and, and making sure that we're, we're protecting the neighbors that are there in that neighborhood. If you do something the same night, there's a softball tournament, then, you know, I think the traffic could just be absolutely horrendous. So, I mean, so my question is, can this, can, can we, can we broaden the proposal to not only include what we want to do physically to the space, make it more beautiful, but what do we mean by activities? What, what are we willing to do? Let the board have some decisions to try to make some efforts to protect the neighborhood.
That's my concern too. I, I think, I'd like to see more detail as to exactly what's going to be occurring here. There is an issue about parking, there's an issue that you have na, close neighbors in the area, and you have conflicting activities going on at the same time. But, but I do think that it is a betterment. We need more parking over in that area. It's just a question of exactly what's going to be happening there, and how do, how do we coordinate it with, and I think we do have to coordinate it with some of the other groups in town that provide activities like concerts. Because I'm not really, you know, based on everything we've talked about, I'm not real sure what, what we're going to be doing here.
That's my concern too, is, you know, it's, it's like a free ticket at that point. We have no, you know, there's been talk about, you know, how many shows, how many times do you disturb the neighborhood, you know?
Then what, then maybe what kind of shows?
We don't know, we don't know. Is it just weekends? Is it, I don't know what you're looking for.
And, and we had a public hearing last week, but we haven't heard, last time, we, have we gotten any comments from any of the neighbors, or?
No, because we haven't approved anything yet. We haven't put anything out, we haven't held a public hearing.
There was a public, the planning board had a public, public hearing. Nobody came.
Yeah, but that, that, they were focused on, on the grounds, and they're looking to ask for answers.
There weren't any comments.
Pardon?
Were there comments?
No.
Through the chair. I guess it does come back to a little bit of what the use over there in this, this stage. Does the planning board one have the stage on it?
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not asking for the stage. We have to go back to the planning board if we want to put a stage in there. We're not, we're not intending to do that at this time.
Right. If, if there is a, a goal to do that, you'd have to come get approval from the Board of Selectmen, and then it would go through the site plan approval process too.
Yes.
Right. Because whatever happens here has to go through the site plan approval process.
So what is, are we, I, I interpret, and I think we're all pretty much on the same line, that it's a good thing for Webster, and it fits in with our mission plan, but I also see the sensitive side to the neighborhood and, and a known congestion. We want to know what you're going to add to that. Is it two shows a week? Is it four shows a week? Is it one show a month? I don't know. How many times is that, you know, there's foosball, there's Little League, those are all pretty much planned events.
Right, and, and we see. Yes, we can coordinate with the recreation department as to when those fields are used. I believe they, they, they have, they authorize that those, right? It's not, it's impossible to say exactly how many events we would have, but I, I wouldn't, I, I don't anticipate we would have more than one a week, maybe just something on Saturday afternoons, and that would be it. You know, we have a staff of two full-time people, there's so much we can do. We're, we're just, we're, you know.
Well, if you make profit, it can be four people.
I said six. And, and, you know, I, I, I mean, I'd love to answer your question, but we don't really have a history, you know? But if I say it's one, one Saturday afternoon event, or, you know, one day a week, I, you know, that, I don't anticipate it would be more than that.
When you say that, 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 Barbara, just some, I know you, some examples of, more examples of what type of events we're talking about?
Well, we're thinking maybe a, a small art show, like we have a group of vendors, and there's, there's artist booths, or there's a weaving show textiles. So maybe fiber arts vendors would be, and I don't know how, I, I don't, we probably couldn't even have more than twenty or so in the space that we have in order to leave room for people to walk around. And, and what's driving this really is to try to create awareness for the place, to get people to come to the museum. And even with rentals, if we could rent some of the space, it would be in concert with people attending the museum. When we have, we've had a couple of birthday parties inside the museum, and part of that was we sold tickets to all the, you know, to each of the people that came to the party. The, the museum was part of the attraction for them to have it there. And I foresee that same thing to be true if we have something that's also outside. It would just give us more opportunity to get people there and to sell tickets, you know, and, and get, spread the word more, because we need more people to come. And in order to accommodate that, we're putting in our own parking, you know? And if we had, say, you know, twenty vendors, textile vendors, we have forty parking spaces there. So, and people wouldn't come all at the same time, it would be over a period of time. So I, I don't think there would be, if we have to get the police for the controlling traffic, we would do that, you know? But I don't, I don't foresee anything that, that's that dramatic, really.
Frank, I think the biggest concern that I, that I read is parking. And having other activities going on at the same time, like in the ball fields.
See, I think you correct this, if, if I'm wrong, but I think when we started out, we were talking about an outdoor theater, and we're thinking more grandish than art shows. Well, that's how we started.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah.
So we're, we're trying to, you know.
I think that's a good point, Earl, because initially, we were talking about a stage. Now Barbara's saying, well, we don't.
Electrification, stage lights.
We're going to have, putting in parking lot, you know, silly not to at least put in infrastructure if we're going to have a parking lot, and, okay, that's fine, but the stage is not going to be built?
No, we're not asking for that now.
Okay, because I know in the original plan, it showed a stage, and that was one of the concerns the planning board, or they did too, is, is what does this allow now?
That's why you're up here.
That's right.
Leave it on the stage.
So, yeah, so you had the stage issue, which presumably going away for the, but the other comments from department heads really about, I think for the most part, about, about neighborhood impact.
Yeah.
That was really, I think, I don't mean to speak for the board, but I think if you break it all down, it's questions about neighborhood impact. Am I, am I summarizing it reasonably well?
I think you're thinking about what, May, early May to October? Is that kind of what you're thinking far as a season?
I would be, I would be thrilled if we could do something every Saturday afternoon that would drive, that would bring some, that would bring some people to the museum. And maybe we had another example that I've, that I'd like to do besides the, the reenactment, is, is possibly an afternoon of children's games from 200 years ago, you know, what kids might do, have done then. Again, it's to try to bring people to the, to the venue.
Yeah, I think one of, one of the, speaking to one of the department heads, I think it's kind of almost, you know, what's the word, a chicken and the egg. You know, in some ways, you almost have to see it to understand the impact, but on the other hand, you know, you don't want to see negative impact. So it's, it's a little bit of a gut call, gut check, leap, a leap of faith by the board on how you see this playing out, but.
How do you plan on bringing income with what you're talking about now?
Well, if we had.
How are you going to make money?
If you had a, say we had a textile exhibit, we would charge for the, for the rentals of the booths, of the particular vendors. That would be the income. Visitors, I think, it'd be difficult to charge, it'd be nice if we could, but I don't think we could.
Are you looking at like food truck events?
We would like, we have the food truck space there, so we could make that part of, part of it when we have an event to, to, and food trucks also, there's, there are different, they have different forms of, of, you know, compensation, but hopefully we could, they would also pay us some, some money to be there.
Yeah.
So, and all of the proceeds would go back into, to the museum, to, to our operations. It's not going anywhere else.
Yeah.
And like, and like I said before, I don't see us doing anything that isn't somehow associative with getting people inside the building. And, and that's the plan here, because the building, that will sell itself, and that sells to anyone who comes, they'll bring, come back and bring other people. And we saw that quite, quite a lot this past summer, actually, with people from Webster, local people that had visitors, friends and family that came to visit, and they, they bring, they have something, they have some place to bring their company now, you know, which is kind of cool. And that wasn't true last year, but it was true this year, this past summer, and I think next summer even more so. And, you know, it's, it's difficult to create awareness these days, the media is fractured, you know? And we have to do everything we can to get people to come. And again, like I said, the purpose is to get them into the museum.
I'm assuming that since you're not going to have the stage anymore, you won't be doing concerts?
I don't, I don't think so. I, you know what, you already have a concert venue, and you're going to have another one. So I don't think.
She's sad for this.
I, I know.
Traffic and influence the neighborhood, that's all.
And, you know, the thing is, if you wanted to tell us, if we wanted, if you're going to have a concert, if you're going to, if you're going to increase the decibel level on the field, you know, then, then we have to get permission from you or something, we could do that, I think, I.
I think it was a good idea working it out with our recreation director, I think.
And that's in the proposal, again, she.
Yeah, yeah, I want to do that. Again, like I said last time, I think that it will help all of us if we can coordinate these things, and, and if, if somebody can come, and there's, there are two places to go, by the river and to Ray Street, you know?
Through the chair, like, how many Saturday afternoon things do we put on in town? Like, not really a whole lot, so I, I like the idea of, especially with our vision statement being Samuel Slater and, and everything there, I, I do like the idea, if we can kind of contain it and come up with a agreeable, I think utilizing, I, that spot would be nice. I drive by it five times a, a week.
Yeah.
It's just an empty spot, you know? I would like to, I would like to see something with, in, you know, in the right measure, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the thing, whether it's Saturday or one day or, or even two, it, it depends on what else is going on during that time. I don't think we're looking to really tie your hands, but we're looking for coordination, I think. And, and also, we don't want to have to compete with the museum too, because we have events too, that, you know, the town-sponsored events, and you're going to have the theater down here, and it's going to be a lot of competing. So we're just trying to keep everything reasonable.
I'm just focused on the museum.
I know.
As long as we have a weave in someday, once that lawn is nicely put in.
Right. And also, I, you know, I, if you said we can go forward, it's not, it's, it's going to take some time, it's probably going to take years to really develop all of that too. We're not, you know.
So what do we, if the museum is looking to do this, and do they have to present a time, a schedule or something to, to Carol or event schedule?
Well, you know, again, they, they would have to if you require it.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, what's the best way to?
I, I would say, I know in your proposal, you did mention that you were willing to coordinate with recreation.
Oh, I would love to meet with her, I'll meet with her tomorrow, I, you know, to sit and, and talk about how, I mean, the last thing we want to do is compete with what the town recreational committee is doing. We really don't. I would like to find out what her thoughts are, so we don't do those things, or we do them together, or.
So just as a, maybe a way of kind of packaging this a little bit, how far in advance of an event, even if it's, again, just a, like you mentioned, an art show or kids events, how far in advance would you have to plan an event like that?
I would think at least five or six months.
Oh, really?
I think so.
Well, I, I would think maybe if you presented, you know, a schedule to the recreation director, say in a, you know, a month in, two weeks or a month in advance of your proposed activities, and, and again, I hate to have her, give her, you know, yea, yea, nay, power over events, but there's got to be some way to coordinate, you know, because, you know, you can't give us a schedule for a year in advance. So there's going to be some, if there's some way to coordinate in a way that gives the board some, some ease, that if there's anything that you propose is going to have to be denied or restricted, or, you know, you know, I think what we're looking for is comfort, and if there's a way you can provide that comfort even by submitting something, you know, in advance to the recreation in our office.
Recreation probably organizers of sporting events too. That, that's one of the concerns, is when they have football games, softball games, tournaments.
Yeah.
There's going to be a lot of cars there.
Would that, yeah, that's right, and.
And there's foosball too.
Yeah, it may be a.
Saturday event, yeah.
That's why, like I say, maybe, you know, recreation should have some say over approval of certain events, because, again, I think part of the, part of the challenge is, is you may be holding a children's event, which might only draw 10 to 15 people. You know, there may be some, some types of activities that very, very low draw type of activities, and then maybe others that are, could be significant, and it's kind of hard to put a, put our arms around that in this type of a venue. How do, how do you do that? So there's got to be some level, you know, some checks and balances, I think, with the town, however, whether it's through recreation in our office, or whatever the case may be. Am I helping?
I think we're, we got the message. We're all trying to, we don't want to create a bigger problem. And that doesn't help anybody, it doesn't, certainly doesn't help us, and in the long run, it won't help the people that go to, want to go to your events and can't find parking space.
Yeah, no, I know, but you know, we. But you know, we have had to face the problem of parking ourselves, you know? And like I said, some days we go and there's not every single public street. All the street parking is, and people who want to come to the museum have no place to go. So therefore, we're proposing to spend a lot of money to build our own parking lot. So we don't have to compete with the public parking. So.
And if that works, that's fine, you know? It's when it gets the bigger events. If it does get to that, then we'll have to look at it, is all I'm saying. But for now, I think, you know, minus the stage, I think, you know, we don't need to control events, I don't believe.
But I would like if proposed events could be submitted to Carol in our office. Do you have any concerns? We can check with our public safety people.
Right.
Because that's, I think that's, we don't want the phone calls.
You said yourself, you know, four to six months out in advance that you want to do something.
Yeah, I think so. And in all honesty, so we haven't done this before. So I'm giving myself plenty of time and I to try to work this out too. It's just a big challenge for us.
Don't forget the schools too, because they control the football.
Yeah.
So that's yet another factor.
And sometimes, sometimes something you cannot know, because the PAV sometimes takes up all the spaces too.
To the chair, if I might, I don't want to over, I'm not disagreeing, but I want to make sure we don't put too much emphasis on personally on approving and coordinating, because the town can handle more than one activity on a Saturday afternoon. And it's a different crowd that's going to go to a textile, that's going to go to a foosball event, right? I mean, it's a different, maybe, who knows? So I think the idea of having some, first of all, I think they're going to help the parking situation as it is now by having a parking lot. I think that's going to help the neighborhood. Secondly, well, it won't help them if the neighborhood.
Well, there was like a parking though.
There is, this, I know this is a kind of a nuance, but if you looked at the plan, you know, behind on the far side, there is, there are, that's where the public parks now. Sort of randomly, it's just dirt, really. And they're just cars parked there randomly. What we're proposing to do on our plan is to actually improve that section too and stripe it. So that would actually probably accommodate more public parking than there is now. Yes, right.
You know, without the stage, I'm not too worried about the size of events at this point. And I think I would, where I do agree is just to ask in good faith that you do coordinate activities with the schools and with Carol. Just to, do you foresee nighttime outdoor activities?
No.
Well, it's going to be electric.
We are going to put some lights there so people can park and see what, you know? But no.
I think, you know, we could, I mean, the plan, it's got to go back to planning for the final. And I know there was a comment about the health department from the dust raised up.
You know, I hadn't, we hadn't considered that, so new. So we'll look at, we'll look at that.
But that's all good stuff, and I'm glad, you know, we got input from everybody.
Actually, we'll get some good input for the rest of the time.
So I think we should probably vote to send this approved minus the stage.
Right, I would make that clear.
Yes. And we're hearing from you, one and, you can say one or two events a week on a small scale. If there's something bigger, it'll be coordinated. I don't think Carol needs to know if you're going to have 12 to 18 children there for a kids event. But weddings, I think, you know, that needs some coordination. So I think we're good to go, and we're going to have to play it by ear as we go along, both for you and for us. So do we need to vote on that, or what's the pleasure?
You do need to vote on something, because without doing so, this can't get to site plan review. And the planning board is basically looking for, again, what will you allow? Will you allow parking lot, green space, the area for the food trucks? The stage, well, it sounds like the stage is off the.
No, I think we're okay with this plans as submitted minus the stage.
And keep in mind, one of the things that like the planning board is going to be asking about is it's going to be an area for food trucks. Well, the food trucks should only be in conjunction with events at the site. Not just having food trucks.
Oh, yeah, no, that's absolutely. I don't think we could get food trucks there for any other reason.
So I'll.
I'll make a motion to approve minus the stage.
Sending it back to the planning committee? To review the.
For review and.
Yeah, for site plan review.
Second. The food truck, I think right in the plan, it says something about the food trucks can only be used for non-profit events.
I think that's in there, in the narrative.
I think that's in there.
I think that's in the narrative that Barbara put together. Yeah, food trucks, food trucks.
I think we said they would only be sponsored events by us.
That's what the proposal says, yes.
So you want to state your motion one more time?
I, I.
Sounded better the first time, Scott.
I vote to refer this back to the planning board as submitted, except for the stage for site plan review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. I think we're unanimous.
Thank you, Barbara, for.
Thank you. Now I can exhale.
Barbara's been a pleasure to deal with through all this. I think.
Good luck.
You who worked with Barbara know that, so.
Next is the renewal of local licensing for the calendar year 2025. I think the, we've done it in the past where we take it by groups and note by exception, like the all alcohol restaurant license of 23 that will, you know, if there's any board member that wants to talk more about any one, we can make a motion to approve the others minus that and then get back to those individually. Is that reasonable? So I had down on about halfway down in the first side, the Musa family doing business at the lodge. I know there are taxes owed on that. They're looking to sell that property, but they want to renew the license. So I think that would be, the license would be available upon payment of any monies owed to the town. Sydney and Rio Club is another one that, you know, we, to my knowledge, they haven't complied with their original liquor license yet, i.e. serving food. Is that correct? So I think that should, you know, that comes into question. The Wine Studio 51 has not been really opened. Is that a downtown liquor license?
It is. I did hear from the owner and he has an interested party. They've been doing work, they want to open. They just had to deal with some financing to get the license.
But that hasn't been opened in like two or three years. And the last question I got is the Mexican Kitchen, Brajes? Last one, what is, where is that?
That's still, that was approved by the fourth year, but it's pending in K B C C. They haven't officially approved it yet, so they don't have a license number. It was on this list in case A B C C did.
They have, have not?
They have not approved. But those are the only four that I had a question on. And you said Al Maro was added to the, added to this list? So it's actually 24. Does anybody else have any concerns on any of the licenses?
Those were the ones that we've been talking about.
Yeah. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the liquor licenses with the exception of Musa Sydney, Wine Studio and Mexican Kitchen.
Help me understand why not the Wine Studio?
Well, it's in the process of being sold. They're waiting for a.
Right, there's nothing to renew just yet.
Right. And that's a town downtown license, right?
I'm sorry, okay.
We need conditions for each one of these.
Well, all I'm saying is, I just wanted to point out the highlights. All the rest are pretty much, I mean, if we're okay with all of them, then that's fine. I'm okay with the Musa. The license is going to be withheld before they, we're approving the license, but until they pay the back fees. Yeah. It'll be held back. And the Sydney Rio is probably the only one that, you know, is questioned. And again, I think the Wine Studio, you've answered that. I can probably take that off the list as the Mexican Kitchen. So it really comes down to just the El Rio. Entertain a motion of approving all the licenses except El Rio. Are we okay with that?
Except for the Sydney and Rio?
Yeah.
So what happens if we don't approve the Sydney and Rio?
Well, we can approve it, we just need to talk about it. I'm just trying to save time and approve the 23.
Oh, and just have further discussion on those that you identify. And again, just for your comfort, there are no licenses at all of any sort that leave the office unless there are any taxes and fees the old town are paid.
So you're looking for a motion to approve all of the alcohol?
With the exception of Sydney and Rio for further discussion. We have a motion and a second. Any other comment? All in favor, say aye. Again, we'll go on and then any exceptions, we'll go back and, you know. Alcohol Club does eight licenses. Sportsman's Club, the Booster Athletic, the Jusco, Polish American Club, Polish American Veterans, T S K K, Webster Legion, Fish and Game.
Have there been any problems with the police with any of these?
Not recently, no.
Just the ones that we had last, I think?
Yeah, the ones that you have asked before you return the meetings.
Yeah, okay. And no non-compliance? You want a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve all alcohol licenses, eight in total.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous. Next is Wine and Malt Restaurant, three. Big Belly Cafe, Golden Greek and Afro Fusion.
Make a motion that we approve the Wine and Malt Restaurant license request?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Next is Package Store licenses. There's four, Country Farms, Webster Wine and Liquors, Heaps, Hank's Package Store, Jaris Ted's of Webster.
I make a motion that we approve the all alcohol package store licenses.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Next is Wine and Malt Package Store, that's five. Jimmy's Convenience Store, Max Auto Repair and Convenience Store, Sunnyside Farm, Price Chopper, Holly Farms.
Make a motion that we approve the Wine and Malt Package Store five licenses.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
To the chair, didn't years ago when we granted this to, I wasn't on the board to Jimmy's, that there was some discussion about we'll do it if you make your store look a little nicer?
I think there was discussion at that one point.
There was discussion.
It hasn't happened.
No, no, it pretty much hasn't.
Well, you still have that option if you wish to exercise it, that's.
When was that put into place?
I'm sorry?
When was that? When did, you know what year roughly?
I don't think it was last year, but.
No, it was before my title.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a long time ago.
And you also have the right to ask the owner to appear before you to discuss your concerns too. You know, regarding your license.
I know there was a lot more activity as you face Jimmy's to the left, adjacent to the police station. That seems to be, if I'm remembering right, not as congested as it was.
No, I think there's parking over there for.
Yeah.
Across the street.
There was a lot of things parked there.
Yeah, yeah.
So what is the, what is the pleasure?
Well, if we want to do something about Jimmy's, what are we going to do? What are we going to say to them?
Well, first of all, what's the issue? What's the issue that we have?
I would renew it. And then if the board desires, ask the owner operated to come in, listen to the board's questions and concerns, and have him speak to those. But I wouldn't hold, that's a little late to hold up a license in fairness to the owner.
And also, we're going to be very careful that we're prepared to talk about and exactly know what the issues are. And I've never been in it, so I can't.
Is that, huh?
I said, thank you, we can approve it and then talk about it later.
Withhold. Oh, okay, want to approve, withhold this for the?
No, I wouldn't withhold it based on what we've heard from Rick.
Okay, but you want to have Kelly hold it?
No, I think what we're talking about is renew it and then at another selectmen's meeting, if you decide you want to have the owner in here to discuss your concerns, we can arrange that.
Before he picks it up, I don't know when, can he come January 1st, right? We're not meeting till the 12th, so, or 13th.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I would think you'd have to do this, you know, January, February. There's no reason to have to do this before he receives his license.
Oh, he can receive the license and then.
Yeah, I just think this is a discussion for.
Gotcha, I didn't know if it was talking.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
We should line up our questions of site visits, probably.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's good.
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay, okay. So a motion?
We get a motion and a second.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. It's unanimous. Then the Comminictual License for 30 stores? 30 victuals?
I move that we approve the licenses for the Comminictual or 30 licenses.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Next, Class One New Car Dealer's License, we have three, Barry Equipment Company, Long Subaru and Place Motors.
Make a motion that we approve the Class One New Car Dealer's Licenses.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'll just abstain out of this one.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we have four yes and one abstain. Class Two Used Car Dealer's License. We have 27. Anybody have any questions?
The junkyard that we talked to last week, four hours, right? They don't have a used car dealer, do they?
No.
I didn't know if they were there under a different name. I didn't know if they were there under a different name.
Okay.
You know, that's down the bar.
Yeah, down the bar.
LaPlante Brothers?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, are we okay with the 27 used car licenses?
I make a motion, we approve the license request for the 27 used car licenses.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Next is Class Three Automobile Junk License. We have three of them. Armak Motors, JK Auto Body and Glass, LKQ on Route 16.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class Three Automobile Junk Licenses, being three of them.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Next is Sale of Gold, we have one, Vero's Fine Jewelry.
Make a motion that we approve the license request to sell gold from Vero's Jewelry.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Lastly, we have Junk Dealers License, LaPlante Brothers. And I'd just like to add that there is one more, yes? Oh, okay. No, just have a seat for now. There's one more that I'd like to make note of. There is another Junk Dealers License, and that's Stalich. And for some strange reason, that doesn't run out until May. It's out of sequence from all these other 50-something licenses. But I'd just like to make note of that and that we would have to bring that under discussion. And I think the idea might be, come May, if we do renew it, to fit it into the 18-month license.
Yes.
Or a seven-month, or something like that, yeah. Okay. So next is LaPlante Brothers, and I think we've had... We have two applications pending. One from the present owner and one for the potential buyer. I don't know, did you have any comment you wanted to? Yeah.
Hi, sorry to keep you up this late.
Yeah, I know.
I just, I'm Gail LaPlante, I'm Arthur's daughter. And we're just trying to get a conclusion to this whole process of... I'm the youngest of the daughters, there's just the three of us. We really need to, like, move this process along and get this property dealt with. Can I just, like, do like a two-minute thing about? Like, I saw the article in the Webster Times the other day, and, you know, it's very upsetting to my family because historically, in like 2011, there was a problem with the town, with my dad's, you know, business in the condition of things. And he did come up with a three-point plan with his attorney in Boston, Attorney Nylan. And I have a ton of paperwork on the progress that he made over that 2011-2013 period, that he took out tons and tons and tons of metal. So when it talks about this willful indifference, he wasn't willfully indifferent. And he was dedicated to that plan that he and Attorney Nylan or whoever came up with. I mean, in 2013, my father was 92. My mother was suffering from Alzheimer's. By 2015, I had to move them out of their house. By 2016, my father lost his license. By 2017, my mother died. By 2017, my father couldn't walk and he was in a wheelchair until he died last year. Time ran out on him with cleanup. And I'm left as the only healthy daughter trying to move forward and get past this. And we'll do whatever we can to make that happen. So it's not that he didn't try to do it, it's not that he didn't put the effort into it. So I see, you know, applying to get this renewed, he's had a junk license for decades. We need to do this to get past and start getting the stuff out of there. That's the reason I'm applying for it, because when the potential owner came in last month, it seemed like that was not going to be a process that was going to be, like, able to be dealt with quickly. And in the meantime, I'm still the owner and I need to really, like, move things forward for everybody's benefit.
Okay. I think, just to comment on that, I understand you've gone through a lot over the last 10 years and the family. And that is a longstanding piece of property.
Absolutely.
That's gone through various conditions. And I think, you know, just to add to that, from 2013 to now, a lot of other things have come into play. You know, pollution of water systems and ground pollution and all of that stuff is becoming more in the forefront.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a known fact that, like, when Route 52 was built, there's Mass Highway. Talked to a lot of the neighbors there. My father's business was ruined by water pouring down, like, the rapids.
Yeah.
Like, when I was a child, you could drive all the way around the building. You can't do that now because now there's water.
Yeah.
And wetlands, and, you know, that was not like that.
Right.
And when he put things there, he didn't put stuff in a stream. He put things there and then the stream came.
Right.
And, like, I have pictures of it at home, and it cracked the walls, the roof fell in. I mean, there was litigation started and then all of a sudden it was dropped. Like, we are like a kind of, we're, I'm not saying that we're victims, but that situation clearly messed up things for many, many years. And essentially, you know, didn't help his business.
Right, right. Now, we understand the history of it all, but we have to look at the here and now and where do we go from here?
I mean, is, can this, I mean, I guess it's all a thing of, like, will the state highway ever be held responsible for putting in...
To my knowledge, we're not...
We have no standing with that.
Because that is causing the water to come out onto Route 12.
I have...
And flooded a lot of other people's properties.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but...
We have a meeting with the conservation this week.
Yes, no, I understand that, and that's what we're expecting.
So we're really trying to do the right things now and, you know.
Well, that's good.
Don't punish us for the past.
No, that's good, because...
I'm now trying to deal with...
We need to, they need to be on the property to really assess what conditions are.
And the only, like, the only problem with, like, when they came that other time and we got that letter, we didn't know that they were there. Like, that was the biggest problem with, like, why we wrote that letter. It wasn't like, we're not going to allow you to come. I wish somebody had called me later or tried to get ahold of my dad to say we would like to set up an appointment to come. If anybody had gotten hurt on that property, I mean, we hadn't applied for anything that would have allowed them to come unannounced.
Yeah.
So all that, you know, we're totally willing to work with what...
I get that sense, and that's a good thing. And I think, well, we're going to debate, but I think we're talking two licenses for the same property right now. And I think they're both in the same, we're looking, whoever, whether that sale goes through or doesn't, we're looking for the owner of that property come January 1st, have a plan to the board.
I will probably be the owner of that property, either toward the end of December or January.
Yeah.
But the, like, my family, the license is due this month, so it was like that, you know.
It runs out the 31st, yes.
I said, you know, I need to come now and get this because they were tabled to January anyway, so, like, I want things to progress and I want things to move on.
We're going to seek approval, but they're going to be withheld until receipt by whoever of a plan that the conservation can live with and, you know, number one is assessing it. We've got to get on the property and assess it.
And we're more than happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I had just applied for my family, just because it was due.
Yeah, yeah.
And we need to, like, be able to get things going, moving forward.
I think, you know, why don't you wait?
Okay, thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board? We have two licenses, I always got two licenses, one from the owner, the daughter, and one from the potential buyer. Mine, and I think we'll hold... Battery maybe?
Yeah, maybe. My, thanks. My... What I think we should do is probably approve the license and the licenses and withhold them until we get a plan.
Yeah. Keep in mind, one's the renewal and one's the new application.
Yes, yes.
I have a question, did... Can we approve a license for a new application if someone doesn't own the property yet?
That's true, but he's looking to own the property on the idea, on the...
Presumably that would be upon...
That he can get the license, so it's kind of...
Yeah. So the new license would be presumably contingent upon the new owner taking control of the property.
Yeah.
Either by ownership or some other form of custody, lease or whatever the case might be.
I mean, we can approve her license if you want to do that now.
I'm more comfortable approving this license and waiting on the other one, to be frank with you.
But the conditions are going to be the same, that it's not going to be released till someone...
Well, that's up to the...
The owner or somebody's...
We'll do whatever the second one's... Can that be held, held back by the town?
That's what I was going to say.
The second one? Until the purchase CEO... Well, that hasn't been approved by the board anyway, so that still has to come before you with whatever conditions you require at that time. So there isn't an approved license for us to even hold. So right now, this is the only thing before us. I think you said come back with a plan on the other license before you consider that new license to presumably a new owner when a transaction occurs. This presumably is to allow the current owner to maintain their license if and until there's a new license issued at that site.
Whose responsibility is it to submit the plan?
I think that's the current owner and the prospective new owner would have to figure that out between them, yeah.
Right, so just to be clear, I think we're going to approve the license, I mean, we potentially could approve the license, but it's going to be withheld by the secretary, by Kelly, until there's a plan submitted by the owner, potential new owner, whatever, and there has to be that communication. And I think, like we talked to the potential previous owner, we meet again on January 12th or 13th visit. And hopefully, the lawyer had said that they would submit the plan by then. And hopefully, someone from the Conservation Commission, if they haven't already, will come on to the property at your invite.
Personally.
Okay. And that meeting will be on the 13th, so between January 1st and 13th, I mean, there's nothing in the license or not licensed that prevents you from selling metal. You don't need a junk license to sell metal. Okay?
Yes.
So the pleasure of the board?
And will we approve the Junk Dealer License for LaPlante Brothers? And contingent upon Board of Health approval?
Plan, right?
The Plan, the Plan Conservation Commission, the Plan.
Conservation.
Contingent upon, so middle of a plan.
Contingent upon, so middle of a plan.
To conservation.
Approved by the, to conservation, approved by conservation, yes.
Okay. Say that again? That'll be good.
Yeah.
So make your way.
You second?
Approval contingent upon submitting a plan to conservation?
I think it was contingent upon a plan approved by the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
I got that right?
Yes.
And we have a second.
I second it.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The clock works, but it's...
I know.
Next on the agenda is Town Administrator's List.
Do we want to go back to...
We want to go back and talk about that one liquor license?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, El Rio, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, good save, good save.
So the one question that we didn't approve is the Sydney and Rio Club license renewal.
For the chair, have they made any contact since the last time they were here?
They do have the CEO from the Building and Fire Department, but they, as far as I know, they have not contacted Camille or have not got a permit from Camille.
And keep in mind, none of that has anything to do with the entertainment license they applied for, which included...
Right.
So this is just as is right now.
Right now.
Are they serving alcohol now?
No.
No.
They're not, yeah, they're not, remain not open. It's about five years now, they've got a license.
I think it's approaching that, yeah.
Right.
Now, are there other alcohol licenses that are available to others, or is this tying up?
If this license doesn't get renewed, it goes away.
Right, you'll lose the license.
We lose a license.
Because the town has been allowed to have additional liquor licenses downtown by special legislation that bring the town over its quota. So when you lose licenses, other licenses, you aren't allowed to. It reduces your, you don't get to get those back because you're over the quota. So presumably, you know, if you didn't renew this, you'd lose the liquor license. If you didn't renew another one, you'd lose that license until you came under the, what the quota is set by the state for population.
And if there was a situation where the owner sold it to someone else, would we... Would the license carry over or would we have to, or would we lose it or...
Well, the license, yeah, the license could be transferred.
Could be transferred.
To another, right, to another owner.
So we would not lose it if that, in that case?
Correct, correct. So there's your dilemma.
We've talked about this a bit because there's been other, looking back, the Colonial Club withheld after they closed for a number of years and finally the selectmen at the time had removed it because there was no activity. And I think we were talking about that. That there's a number of places that are holding a license that aren't doing anything with it, this being one of them. And that maybe in the future, we want to get some sort of, I think it was, somebody said it was six years for the Colonial Club before they pulled it. So I think, you know, there's got to be, I think, future discussion, there might want to be discussion on setting a time limit for these licenses, like Studio 51, I think is about three years now.
I think the, you know, obviously, the the possibility of losing an available license obviously complicates. I mean, I think, other than that, I think the board's decision would be pretty clear. Other than you'd lose a liquor license that hopefully would be of value elsewhere in town.
So are we able, sorry?
You can renew it.
Are we able to renew a contingent upon them getting a compliance?
You could, but I would just suggest you renew it as is. And if they're not moving towards compliance within a reasonable period of time, well, then I think, I think next year, you either have a dilemma this year to make a decision.
Right.
Or presumably next year.
And I think we set a precedent with the six-year Colonial Club, so...
Right.
Some of the time got together and said.
Six years. Six years, sounds good. Yeah.
But there is a time.
We're at five now, so one more year.
We could renew it for one more year, but put a place mark in it.
Can we, yeah, can we stop making, putting place marks on there on, on these licenses? I'm sorry. Can we stop putting a place mark on these licenses that need some action on our part, like this one?
Can we let Rio know that we're going to renew this license?
We certainly can. I mean, I'm sorry, but Tom, Tom, to your point, yeah, I think we discussed it a little bit. We have, we have a spreadsheet there. There's a right-hand column. There's a right-hand column, yeah. You suggesting that, uh, going forward, we have ongoing notations about some of these licenses? Like this one. I'm sure Kelly, I'm sure Kelly could, uh, could, could do that. Yes.
But with this license, could, can we insert something saying that potentially it may not be renewed if you don't comply?
No, I, I don't, I don't think so. That may be a, that may be a, a letter too.
That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying we won't release it.
No, but I wouldn't put it on the, the license itself. I would, that would be a, okay.
Insert a letter with it that.
We can do that, yes. Yes. That it's something to the extent that it's the board's intent not to renew your license next year if you don't comply.
Right.
Something to that effect, sure. We can do that.
So, yeah. So would the motion be renew the license with a insert?
I don't know that we need the insert. Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Because we have the power not to renew it next year.
Right, I think.
But I mean, should we let them?
I, I would say this, you renew it and you instruct me to send a letter.
Yeah.
To Mr. I think we should warn them. Right, right. So, so again, you renew it, instruct me.
Yeah.
To send a letter to that effect. Yes, that might be. Glad I could help, Tom.
Somebody want to second that?
I haven't been of much help all night, so I'm glad I can help this time.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, Rick, it's your turn.
I'll make this miss, this very quick. Last week, November twenty-fifth, last Monday, we met Thompson Planning and Zoning Commission, heard the application for the proposed development in Thompson, but accessed through Webster. The commission voted to, once again, to issue, approve a special permit. I was there, Police Chief, Fire Chief, Highway Superintendent Earl appeared too, as well as a number of the residents. It's clear, our attorney tried to, you know, elicit information from both highway and public safety as to the detriment to the town and the lack of public safety provisions that provided for in the special permit that fell on deaf ears. It seemed like to me, and again, I would, Earl would maybe have a different idea, but I doubted that this was a foregone conclusion. It was a hearing with the intent of, of preempting the appeal we have in court, Connecticut Superior Court, from the, from the first decision. However, as I mentioned here, the first appeal is still in court. Just because they went through the process again doesn't mean that case is, is resolved. We are told by our attorney, Ian Sullivan, that even this latest application has procedural issues with regard to notice both to the town of Webster and Butters. Now, obviously, we don't technically represent Webster and Butters, but in terms of how the service was delivered to the town of Webster, that was problematic. However, I think that, that even if this gets remanded back by a judge multiple times, the decision of Thompson isn't going to change. I think that was pretty clear. So that puts us in a situation of, of seeing what avenues we can, are available to us through Massachusetts laws. And obviously, we do have the, the option of potentially making that impassable, which I think we should probably think about sooner rather than later. In fact, I, I have contacted both the Highway Superintendent and Fire Chief about how best to make those arrangements. So certainly, we hope that we have legal recourse, Massachusetts courts, in some fashion. I think we're fighting the good fight legally. I think we have an obligation to do that. But if push comes to shove, we, we might have to take other action. I think it was safe to say that the residents who attended were very pleased, and again, I don't want to speak for you, Earl, but very pleased by the attention that, that the town, me, this board, and our department heads are giving to this. I think there's a clear demonstration. They appreciate the fact that we're, we're, we're fighting this to the best of our ability. So we'll continue to do so, but all I can do at this point is keep you updated on the, you know, legal measures that are available to us. And as I said, make, make provisions to, uh.
I'd just like to add.
Maintain traffic control in that area.
I'd just like to add that, realize that this project is only sixteen acres of, what, seven acres of the, um, with Seven Road.
Right. Their engineer basically sold this as, well, it's only this big of this much land. Well, I think most of us heard that and said, well, wait a minute, that's, so, anyway, a lot of, a lot of problems with this from our standpoint. I'm, I'm really, I mean, I could go on all night, but I just want to say the, the lack of public safety services in Thompson is shocking to me. It's shocking. And the, the lack of concern is more shocking. So again, I don't care if they're watching this, listening to me. I assume they're not anyway, so.
No, it did.
And I'll leave, I'll, I'll leave that alone at that point, so, thank you. The next thing, I was finally able to have a meeting with a, with this particular person who was, could assist me with completing a scope of services for this project, somebody that, that the proponent has brought on to, to assist him. Was necessary for me with that person, with the level of expertise. So as of today, I think I've finished the draft RFP. It's taken about four times to meet with this person. Not through my own fault, by the way, so, so I'll be distributing that to a number of people and members that have been involved. Earl has been involved in our community, in our conversations here, so I will ask Earl to take a look at it before anything is, is distributed or, or posted or advertised. So hopefully, within a reasonable period of time now, this can, this can.
Will the board get to see it before it's distributed?
If you'd like to, if you'd like, and again, I, this is a, through the chairman, if you'd like the full board, each member to review it and get back with comments to me, I, however you choose to do it is fine with me.
Well, I, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. And I would say by the end of the week, you should have a, a copy of that for your review. And that's it. That's it.
That's it?
If I say anything more, Courtney and Kelly will come up there and ring my nod.
Uh, let's see. I think we just have the announcements. We still have the same openings. Water Sewer Commission, one member, Historical Commission, three members, and ADA Commission, one member. Future events, Saturday, December seventh, at five P M., the Santa Parade will be coming through town, and Contact Carol Marchand. And for more information or to participate in the parade.
Bundle up.
Yeah, yeah. Continue. But I think it's, it's good for the kids. They don't mind the cold.
Yeah, they like it. The big kids.
It's us older people that, that are more. Proposed future meeting date, as discussed, we'll meet next, uh, meet on Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Chair just.
Oh, boy.
I'm, I'm traveling from the ninth through the sixteenth, so I won't be here.
Okay. Someplace warm, I hope.
Yeah.
What was the date here?
September thirteenth. I mean, January thirteenth. The twenty-fourth threw me. I'll entertain a motion.
To adjourn.
To adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. And.
When is the sign?
We tell her officially.
We supposed to sign this?